Good evening. This March the 9th, 2015 meeting of the Caldwell County Board of Education is called to order. We're glad you're here with us this evening. We know we have a number of honors and recognitions and we're very happy to recognize those individuals and schools and so forth for the good work they're doing. We are hopeful, I know at least Dr. Stone is hopeful, that our snow days are behind us now and so these 60-degree days is something he enjoys seeing. So hopefully, we won't have any more days that will be missed for the rest of this school year. I also wanted to mention that Joe Sims is not here tonight. He's out of town on a business trip. He sends his regrets for not being here. At this time, we're going to move on. I'm going to call on Dr. Carol Burns, Associate Superintendent for Education Program Services, for the invocation for the board.
May we pray. Our Father, we're thankful for the many blessings that you give to us so freely. We're thankful for living in this nation, this state, and this wonderful community. Most of all, we're thankful for the privilege you give to us to work with children and we pray that you would help us as we go about our daily work to have a great measure of patience and understanding. And Justice Solomon, we ask for wisdom to do what needs to be done for every child in this school system. We ask that you bless all the employees, especially this time of the year, patience runs a little thin and we have lots of things to accomplish, but help us to love the children. And now we ask your blessings on this Board of Education as they go about the work of the school system, that you would help them to do what is good and right. And in all things, we give you the praise and the glory. Amen.
Tonight, our pledge of allegiance is going to be led by students from Hudson Elementary School. We have Megan Farthing, Addison Miller, Tristan Gregg, and Tucker Johnson. If they'll come forward, then everyone please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much for being here and helping us out with that tonight. Next on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda, which the board has had for some time to review. Do I hear a motion? We approve the agenda as has been presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the approval of the minutes. We met on February the 9th, 2015, here in the boardroom for our regular February meeting. Do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes, which you've had the opportunity to review? Is there a motion to approve those?
Make a motion, we approve the February minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes. Next, we have honors and recognitions. I'd like to call on Mrs. Libby Brown, Community Relations Director, to come forward. And I would like to ask that if you would please, this may take 10, 15 minutes, if all of you would stay for the duration of this, if possible, and then after that would be a good opportunity if you need to go home, do homework, eat, or whatever. But we appreciate your being here and we look forward to, the board's going to move down here and we're going to shake hands with the award winners. So if you can help us out in that, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Daryl Pennell, board members, Dr. Stone, it's my pleasure to be here and to recognize students and teachers and schools in the Caldwell County School System for excellent achievement and for exemplary work. And we're going to start with some real extraordinary work in the hallways of the Education Center with the student artwork on display in the Education Center Art Gallery. And this artwork will be on display until the first week of April. So parents, come back and see your children's artwork again. It's always here for your reviewing and to look at the beautiful talent in your family. So we hope you enjoy. We are going to start with Collettsville School and we have Norval Green, 3rd grader at Collettsville School. And you can see the artwork here. Norval Green, and I know that Craig Styron is here, principal, and not sure if the students are here, but I know Craig is here. He may have to come forward and get the certificates. Colt Greer and Jared Teef Teller. Colt is an 8th grader and Jared is a 2nd grader. This is a K-8 school. So, Mr. Styron, do you have any? Oh, you do have Colt here. So come forward, Colt. Let's see, Colt. We will go to another K-8 school, Happy Valley School. And Principal Chad Smith is here. Melissa Yarizowski is also here, the art teacher. And we have Madeline Erskine, who is a 1st grader. So Madeline, is Madeline with us? No? Okay. How about Lexi Laws? Lexi is a 7th grader. And we have Isaiah Watson, 4th grader. Okay, let's do one more K-8 school. That's Kings Creek School. Lydia Stewart is the art teacher and Jenny McNulty is here tonight and she's the principal. Anna Barthay. So Anna is a 5th grader. She isn't here? Okay. Chloe Dunn. Chloe is a 5th grader. Okay. They're giving too much homework, principals. And Colt Weinbarger. Colt Weinbarger is also a 5th grader. So if you'd like to get, parents, if you'd like to get a picture, and art teachers and principals, if you're here, please join us. Or do you want to take pictures? I see principals with, okay. So art teachers.
Come join us, art teachers.
Hold your certificate out like this and smile until everybody's taking pictures.
And here comes the art teacher for the school. So we want art teachers to join us. They do a lot of hard work. Here's Melissa. Yeah. Yes.
Keep smiling.
Hold on, hold on. We've got another.
We have an elementary school, Saw Mills Elementary, and Brad Wright is the art teacher. Principal is Lowell Rogers. The first student is Marley Childress, and Marley is a kindergarten student. We have Alexis Hernandez, and Alexis is a 2nd grader. Alexis isn't here. Adriana Montez, and Adriana is also a 2nd grader. So, okay. We're going to move to our middle school for this evening, and that is Gamel Middle School. You want to do the, okay, Brad, you want to join her? Brad Wright and Mr. Rogers. And we have Gamel Middle, and Janet Roman is the art teacher, and Dr. Michael Wyatt is the principal. We have Daniel Esavido, and he's an 8th grader. Clinique Corpening, and she's a 6th grader. And Amity Eldredth, and she's an 8th grader. Janet and Dr. Wyatt, come down and get the certificates. We won't make you pose for a picture, but you can get the certificates. Okay, now we're going to turn our attention to the sport of wrestling and the young men in our schools who have reached statewide attention. Tavon Woodruff, High Brighton High School, won 5th place in the heavyweight division at the North Carolina 3A State Wrestling Tournament. And I know Tavon is here because I saw him earlier. He was the first person here tonight. And Carl Gess, South Caldwell High School, won 3rd place in the 152-pound weight class at the North Carolina 4A State Wrestling Tournament. Then we have Nathaniel Kale, West Caldwell High School, won 3rd place in the 160-pound weight class at the 2A State Wrestling Tournament. And you may recognize this next young man, he was here last year. Jacob Hauck won his second straight wrestling 2A state championship. Jacob's championship win gave him a perfect 60-oh record. Beta Convention. Students represented their schools well, finishing 1st, 2nd, and 3rd place in statewide competitions. He is the North Carolina wrestling champion in the 132-pound weight class, and this is the good news, he's a junior. So, we'd like to, for our wrestling coaches to come down also. We will start with students from High Brighton High School. We have Coach Crooks, Coach Proudie, and Coach Smith here with us this evening. So these are the men behind these other young men, and we're very proud of them. Daniel Pezzi earned 2nd place in the state biology test, and Elba Usida earned 1st place So welcome.
Keep smiling. Coach just keep smiling. Hard for a coach to smile, but smile.
Scotty.
Scotty.
in the state Spanish test.
Scotty, go find Jacob up there.
So I'm not sure, yes, Elba is here this evening? And congratulations to Mrs. Beard and Mrs. Greeno Bridges, both advisors for the Beta Club at High Brighton, and the Beta Club members who participate in the state convention. Also David Caldwell, their principal, who's right there behind them. And I'm not sure if Mrs. Greeno Bridges is here this evening. Come join us. And South Caldwell brings home an impressive array of awards from the Beta Convention with 26 remarkably polite and enthusiastic delegates attending. The first five awards that will be announced this evening ties the school record. So congratulations to the following. First, Natalie Hughes, 1st place in the inaugural North Carolina Beta Agriculture Contest. A lot of these students are at a UN activity tonight, so we will excuse them. Carrie Burgess, I think Carrie is here this evening. There's Carrie. 1st place in spelling. And she's not only a repeat champion, she's a three-peat champion in spelling. Pretty impressive. Rebecca Hall, she placed 1st in English, but she cannot be here for Model UN. Maryanna Connor and Isaac Talbert scored South Caldwell's first ever win in special talent. So very proud of them. The Quiz Bowl team of Rebecca Hall, Jonathan Carter, Jacob Drayman, and Griffin Hass placed 1st in the written competition and 3rd overall. And Levi Huffman set another school best with a 2nd place finish in creative writing. Okay, he must be with UN. Jacob Drayman, Jonathan Carter, and Holly Quavera were 3rd in math, oratory, and Spanish, respectively. So, no Holly's here? And of course, Jonathan Hass is the math teacher, advisor, and inspirational leader behind this group. So Jonathan, please join us. And Mike Peak is their principal, and he's here supporting them tonight, too.
All right, y'all come on down and the advisors as well.
New Schools for their innovative practices and academic excellence. Caldwell Early College High School has exceeded its goals for academic progress by students in each of the last two years, outpaced the state on ACT performance by more than 30 percentage points, and has achieved a graduation rate in each of the last three years exceeding 95%, 100% last year. The school was named a National Blue Ribbon School last year by the U.S. Department of Education based on the strength of its achievement in closing achievement gaps between subgroups of students. It was the only high school in the state to win recognition as an exemplary achievement gap closing school. Principal Candace Hagaman was selected a 2014 Terrill Bell Award recipient, 1 of 8 nationally as a principal committed to fostering successful teaching and learning and for doing whatever it takes to help students meet high standards. So we're very proud of Caldwell Early College High School. They've been no stranger to the board this year. So I think Candace is here, if you'd like to come down. And we also have George Ward, Director of North Carolina New Schools, and Jody Anderson, Vice President of North Carolina New Schools here tonight. They, I'm going to turn the podium over to them.
Can you possibly bring your staff on down? And we'll turn the podium over to our guests from your school. Anybody from early college with them? Students, staff, anyone? Always bring the big house.
Wow.
Congratulations.
We will, we'll start.
Okay, Candace, we're going to put you in charge of how to pose and to put everybody in place. You're the principal.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to join you in recognizing Caldwell Early College High School as a North Carolina New Schools' School of Innovation and Excellence for 2015. Caldwell Early College High School earned this recognition on the strength of solid evidence that the school is helping all students achieve success by setting high expectations and following effective student-centered approaches to teaching and learning. Each of the four schools recognized in the state was recognized this year based on achieving strong student outcomes measured by a number of different criteria, including state exams and the ACT, College Entrance Exam. Caldwell Early College has already served as a model school under the Learning Laboratory Initiative, a partnership between North Carolina New Schools and the University of North Carolina. North Carolina New Schools will work with all four of the 2015 recognized schools to develop them as host sites to showcase innovative practices for educators, policymakers, and leaders visiting from other schools, districts, and other states. All 140 schools in the North Carolina New Schools Network were eligible to apply last year for this recognition. All of the schools that met the eligibility criteria received an onsite review from our staff, and they closely examined the school's innovative practice aligned with our six design principles that we believe are essential elements for reaching the goal of graduating all students well-prepared for college careers in life. The team of educators visiting Caldwell Early College noted several strengths. First of all, Principal Hagaman demonstrates strong leadership by providing a wide array of opportunities for faculty, staff, and students to regularly collaborate with their peers, share expertise, and assume responsibility for positive school and community engagement. The school provides extensive opportunities for students to develop leadership skills. A strong collaborative culture among teachers is evident, and I've seen that actually myself many times. The school has a robust school-wide instructional rounds process in place during which teachers collaborate and provide feedback to each other in order to improve teaching and learning. And the school has one of the highest college course pass rates of all North Carolina early colleges. We are proud to present Caldwell Early College High School with the North Carolina New Schools' 2015 School of Innovation and Excellence Award. This achievement is a testament to the strong vision and leadership of Superintendent Stone and the Caldwell County Board of Education, the support of district staff, the outstanding leadership of Principal Hagaman, and the consistent hard work and a focus on excellence of the staff and students of Caldwell Early College High School. Congratulations.
Got them all?
All right, everybody smile.
This is going to be a tough.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
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 and they closely examined the school's innovative practice aligned with our six design principles that we believe are essential elements for reaching the goal of graduating all students well-prepared for college careers in life. The team of educators visiting Caldwell Early College noted several strengths. First of all, Principal Hagaman demonstrates strong leadership by providing a wide array of opportunities for faculty, staff, and students to regularly collaborate with their peers, share expertise, and assume responsibility for positive school and community engagement. The school provides extensive opportunities for students to develop leadership skills. A strong collaborative culture among teachers is evident, and I've seen that actually myself many times. The school has a robust school-wide instructional rounds process in place during which teachers collaborate and provide feedback to each other in order to improve teaching and learning. And the school has one of the highest college course pass rates of all North Carolina early colleges. We are proud to present Caldwell Early College High School with the North Carolina New Schools 2015 School of Innovation and Excellence Award. This achievement is a testament to the strong vision and leadership of Superintendent Stone and the Caldwell County Board of Education, the support of district staff, the outstanding leadership of Principal Hagaman, and the consistent hard work and a focus on excellence of the staff and students of Caldwell Early College High School. Congratulations.
Got them all?
All right, everybody smile. Oh, thank you. He's not here. Do you want to, he's not here. Our next student isn't here, so this concludes our honors and recognition. Thank you.
Now would be an appropriate time. You're welcome to stay for the meeting, but now would be an appropriate time to leave. Y'all have a great evening and thank you for being here.
Was it burning up down there?
I thought maybe it was just me and I'm usually not warm, so.
The next item on the agenda is public comment. And as of four thirty this afternoon, we have received no public comment. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our Superintendent, Dr. Steve Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I want to go down to action items for the board. Action item one is revisions, and these have been out for a one-month comment period. We have received no comment from the public about these, so we'd like to take these individually. But a revision to policy thirty-six twenty-one, which is the student athletic eligibility. We've tinkered with this a couple of times, but the piece that we've added has to do with should someone falsify information to us, then we can use that as a reason to make a student ineligible for athletic participation. So we've had it out for a one-month comment period. Would like to recommend approval of policy thirty-six twenty-one with revisions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve policy thirty-six twenty-one as it has been revised.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The next policy is a new policy. It also has been out for a thirty-day comment period. We have received no comments. This is policy forty-two oh-one slash seventy-two seventy-one, which is injury and loss prevention. And this has to do pretty much with the collection of hazardous materials and the how to identify them, how to dispose of them. Again, a requirement of the state and would like to recommend approval of forty-two oh-one slash seventy-two seventy-one.
Do I hear a motion that we approve policy forty-two oh-one slash seventy-two seventy-one, injury and loss prevention?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion we approve policy forty-two oh-one slash seventy-two seventy-one, injury and loss prevention.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to the calendars, the school calendars. We'd like to present these in two different forms. The first for the traditional schools, you have that in front of you. And we have received a couple of comments about the calendar. And what's different from this calendar than the original one that you saw a month ago is that we have made a big addition to by adding the eighteenth of August as a teacher workday and removing that from June the fourteenth. We had two days at the end of June or in June. And now we heard from our teachers and staff that they would like to have that additional day at the beginning of the calendar so they can get in their classrooms and begin to work. So we have made that change. But other than that, there are no changes on the traditional school calendar. School starts for students on August the twenty-fourth, ends on June the tenth. There are breaks in for Christmas. We have that traditional two-week window for that, three days for Thanksgiving, actually a week and a day for spring break for the traditional calendar. Would like to move approval of the two thousand fifteen sixteen calendar for the traditional schools.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen traditional school calendar as presented?
Make a motion that we approve the traditional school calendar as presented.
Second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, item B, the second calendar, is for the Caldwell Early College, Early Center, Caldwell Career Center Middle College and Caldwell Early College High School. That calendar is slightly modified. It does align with the Community College calendar. The students would start on August the sixth, they would end on May the nineteenth. Most of the days within the calendar are certainly aligned to when the college is in session. If there's some changes there, as much as we can. So we'd like to recommend approval of the two thousand fifteen sixteen calendar for the Career Center Middle College and the Early College High School.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the two thousand fifteen sixteen calendar for the Early College High School and Career Center Middle College.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I do want to speak briefly to that. We did have a breakfast meeting with our Representative Robinson, and he has indicated that he will provide for us in the General Assembly a local options bill where we can have calendar flexibility. I don't anticipate that it'll go anywhere, but we want to appreciate Representative Robinson for pursuing that for us. So they'll be introduced as a local bill, which would give us calendar flexibility. We've been trying to get that for some time. And also in talking with Dr. Bohem at the Community College, they, the Community College system is also beginning to advocate more for calendar flexibility for all the school districts. So hopefully at some point it will move along and we can get some calendar flexibility. But you know, we've been talking about that since two thousand four when the calendar law was approved. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and exhibit four, we have a resolution we're asking for you to approve. And the resolution basically is asking the North Carolina General Assembly to revisit its decision to end the driver's education funding program. The, you may have heard, we've talked about it at the retreat, but the driver's ed is funded by the state and it has been fully funded by the state for some time. This provides for students to take driver's training, driver's ed for free. The cost has, the allotment has gone down every year, but we've been able to do it with the firm that provides driver's ed for us. That, but this year or last year, it was completely taken out of the budget. The one provision that is in the budget is that local school districts can now charge sixty-five dollars per child to take driver's training, and only sixty-five. We did a cost analysis and we know that it costs over two hundred dollars for a child to take driver's ed. So we're asking through this resolution to the General Assembly, we'll revisit that decision and fund driver's ed as it has been in the past. And that's either through the Highway Trust Fund or through other resources from the General Assembly. So we'd like to pass this resolution on to the North Carolina General Assembly.
And the resolution reads, "This is a resolution concerning driver's education funding, whereas local school districts in North Carolina are legally required to provide and operate driver's education courses, and whereas costs for operating driver's education courses have historically been covered by earmarked appropriations from the Highway Trust Fund, and whereas driver education is a key component of the graduated driver's license program, which has effectively helped reduce teen motor vehicle accidents and fatalities, and whereas the two thousand fourteen state budget moved all Highway Trust Fund's appropriation for the driver's education program to non-recurring for two thousand fourteen fifteen, and stated it was the state's intent to eliminate the funding in its entirety beginning July one, two thousand fifteen, and whereas school districts have the authority to charge fees to driver's education participants, but that fee is kept at sixty-five dollars per student, while the estimated operational cost per student is estimated to be between one hundred and seventy and three hundred and fifty dollars. And whereas if the state follows through on the elimination of funding for the driver education program, it would impose yet another unfunded mandate on local school districts who would have to find a way to cover the substantial gap between the allowable maximum fee that can be charged and the actual cost of operating this required program. And whereas an unfunded driver education mandate would force school districts to either take drastic cuts to instructional services, which would harm students in the classroom, or cut back the access to the driver's education program through reduced services, which would cause some students to be denied the invaluable and successful training of the graduated licensing program. Now therefore be it resolved that the Caldwell County Board of Education strongly objects to an unfunded driver education mandate. Therefore be it further resolved that the Caldwell County Board of Education respectfully request that the General Assembly revisit its decision to sunset driver education program funding on July one, two thousand fifteen, and either restore the full Highway Trust Fund allocation or establish another funding source that does not cut into other education allotments." That being said, do I hear a motion that we approve the resolution as has been read?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion we approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Stone. And we're gonna move on now to Dr. Trish Johnson, Associate Superintendent for Human Resource Services.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Stone, I have three items for your attention this evening. One requiring, two requiring information, two requiring action and one for information only. That includes usual and customary personnel information that is provided just for your information. Exhibit six includes usual and customary personnel items requiring action. I respectfully recommend approval of these items as they have been presented to you.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the usual and customary personnel matters that you've had an opportunity to review?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the usual and customary personnel items as presented.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And then exhibit seven, it includes the student transfer request since your last board meeting. Since the last board meeting, we had a request for sixteen student transfers. Six of the six received, five meets your established criteria. We respectfully recommend approval of the five. If approved this evening, that brings the total transfers approved for the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year to five hundred ninety-three. We respectfully recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen student transfers as presented?
Make a motion we approve student transfers as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Next, we're dealing with some auxiliary services here. And David, Mr. David Johnson, our Finance Director, is pinch hitting for Dr. Church, who had to be at another meeting tonight. So I'm gonna turn it over to him at this point.
Mr. Chairman, board members, and Dr. Stone, I'm presenting exhibit eight tonight, which is, includes bid tabulations for a partial roof replacement at Gamewell Elementary. Bids were received on February twelfth, and this uses ADM for the funding. It is my recommendation to accept the bid from Bond Tech Incorporated and the ADM application as presented.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we accept the bids for a partial roof replacement at Gamewell Elementary School and that the funding be from the ADM Public Schools Building Capital Fund?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion we approve the bid from Bond Tech and then get the money from the ADM.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, I also have exhibit number nine, which includes bid tabulations for a partial roof replacement at Lower Creek Elementary. Bids were received on February twelfth, and this project uses ADM funding as well. It is recommendation to accept the bid from Berger Ash Roofing and the ADM application as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the bid from Berger Ash Roofing for the partial roof replacement at Lower Creek Elementary School, and also move that we approve the ADM application to go along with that.
Is there a second? And we have a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The final auxiliary service is exhibit number ten, which includes bids for an HVAC replacement on the media center and A-Wing classrooms at Hybryton High School. Bids were received on February twenty-sixth, and this project uses lottery funds for the funding source. It is the recommendation to accept a bid from Triangle Contractors Incorporated and the lottery application as presented.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we approve the bids for the HVAC, Hybryton High School Media and A-Wing, and that the funding be from the North Carolina Lottery Fund?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion we approve the bids for the Hybryton HVAC, A-Wing, and Media and the money from the lottery application.
Is there a second? Okay, any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, thank you, Dr. Church.
David has exhibit eleven.
Now you're gonna switch hats now.
We're gonna go back to finance now.
Mr. Johnson as Finance Director.
Okay, I have exhibit number eleven, which is the fourteen fifteen audit contract, and it's the same as the past few years with Boggs, Crump, and Brown. This information has been approved by the Finance Committee. The Local Government Commission also requires board approval and as an action item on the annual fiscal contract. Tim is with the Finance Committee if there's any questions, Mr. Hawkins.
Well, I'd just like to say that Boggs, Crump, and Brown have done a great job, and there's no increases here in contract, right?
Oh, yes. Okay, so you're making a motion.
I will make the motion to approve the two thousand fourteen fifteen audit contract with Boggs, Crump, and Brown PA.
And a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Exhibit number twelve includes budget amendments to the State Public School Fund, Federal Grant Fund, and Current Expense Fund. Budget Amendment Number Thirteen increases the state budget by thirty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-three cent. This includes an allocation of highway use tax, credential allotments, and vocational program and subpay through revision number twenty-seven. Budget Amendment Number Fourteen increases the federal budget by forty-three thousand and ninety-five dollars. It's increased to Title VI and VI State Improvement Programs. And Budget Amendment Number Fifteen increases the Current Expense Program, Current Expense Fund by one hundred and thirty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars. This is for reimbursement for college, from the college, for instructor pay. If approved, this will bring the total budget to Caldwell County Schools to one hundred and twenty million four hundred and thirty-seven thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars and seventeen cent. It's my recommendation that these budget amendments be approved as presented.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the budget amendments as presented to the State Public School Fund, the Federal Grant Fund, and the Local Current Expense Fund?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion we approve the amendments number thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen as presented exhibit number twelve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and thank you for filling in for Dr. Church tonight. Next on the agenda is for board action. And the board has had an opportunity to look at the Board of Education meeting schedule for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. So do I hear a motion that we approve the schedule as has been presented there, as you have reviewed?
I'll make a motion we approve the meetings as presented, but the times may change.
Well, that's, we'll see. Right now, we're, yeah.
I'll make a motion we approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes. Dr. Stone, do you have?
Well, just a couple of comments about the calendar meetings that you approved. We still have our three traditional Community Board meetings, and we rotate those so the schools, the first school's not always the first high school to, or feeder pattern to have to present the program. We also have built in the District Seven meeting here as well, and your special June meeting where you get to approve those last year budget items. So very good budget or calendar. Two things I want to mention under information, one is the calendar adjustments. We have missed five days of school for students. We've made up one of those days on February the twentieth. I am recommending, and we are going to move forward with the other student makeup day of March the twenty-seventh. That will be a student day. Currently, it is a optional planning day, so we will use that as a student day. The twenty-sixth of March is an early release day on the old calendar, so we will simply move that early release to Friday. So Thursday will be a full day, Friday will be an early release day, and that will make up the second day for students. Now that leaves three days that students still have not, have missed of school, and we are going to take advantage of. we are going to take advantage of a change in the calendar law several years ago. The law says that you can have a 185-day calendar, or you can have a 1,000-hour calendar. We choose to have 1,080 hours with 180 days. So we can forgive three of those student days, and so the recommendation, what we want to do is to forgive those three student days, and, for students, because we already have over 1,025 hours, so this will certainly be within reason to do that. For staff, we don't have that flexibility. Staff are required to work by law. There's no forgiving those, so we've asked principals and our staff to, and supervisors to be flexible to allow folks to make up that time, either through sick leave, vacation leave, or through some kind of comp time or some other hours at the school. And we'll be talking more with principals about that this coming week in our principals' meeting. So cannot forgive the teachers' time, but we're going to be forgiving those three student days, and just hope and pray, and hope and pray that there's no more, no more bad weather. Now what that does is that does leave that Good Friday still intact, the entire week of Easter break. It also leaves Memorial Day intact for students, who will be able to graduate on time June the 10th, so very pleased about that. So that's what we're going to do. I don't know if the board needs to approve that or just nod and let me know you're fine with it, but we'll go ahead and publicize that tomorrow with the community and with the staff. So that's our intent for the calendar. The second item, were there any questions on the calendar adjustments? For the Early College and Middle College, they have a different calendar, so they are going to make up, they missed five days as well. They're going to do a makeup day on March the 12th and a makeup day on May the 21st. So they are going to be forgiving those three days as well, but they'll still have the two days that they make up, and that's because they have a different calendar with the college. Any questions or concerns on that? All right. My second thing I want to mention is the governor's budget. The governor released that last week. There's some raises for brand-new teachers. He's holding true to a promise to raise beginning teacher salaries to $35,000. That's great for teachers in levels one through four. He has also proposed a step increase for teachers at that level where they move to the next level, like at the fifth year, well, the fifth year, the tenth year, where they move up to the next level. There's also a provision for principals to move up a step. No one else is built into that raise for other... It does include a provision to restore some money for teacher assistance, so that's a good thing, because that has not been the trend, so we want to appreciate what the governor's doing there. The governor's budget will now go to the General Assembly. The budget is generated in the House of Representatives, and then it goes to the Senate. There's a couple of other things in the governor's budget. We're very disappointed, of course, driver's ed wasn't there and other things, but overall, that's kind of where the governor's budget is. It helps about 35, 35% of the teachers across the state will get a raise through the governor's budget.
Of course, he's got to get it through both houses in the legislature first.
Actually, the projections are the House will be very good to get it through. It's the Senate that's going to be the issue.
The sticking point.
But we'll follow, but now it goes to the House of Representatives, and they will tweak it and modify it, but a couple of things the governor and the General Assembly have promised is in his budget, and a couple of things not there, but you never know what the House and Senate will do.
Thank you, Dr. Stone. You note at the bottom of the second page of the agenda, we have several meetings coming up, and certainly we would like to invite anyone who chooses to come on Thursday, March 12, 2015, at the William Lenore Middle School Media Center, 6 o'clock. We're going to be having a meeting there to discuss the new school and how that's progressing, and a few other topics, so if you have an opportunity to come to that, then you're certainly welcome. We also have our spring work session that'll be coming up on March the 30th. That will be at Hybryton High School, and it will begin at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. That evening, we will be having our community board meeting at Hybryton High School, and that will begin at 6 o'clock. So keep those dates in mind. Our next regular board meeting here at the Education Center will be on April the 13th, 2015, reception at 5:45, board meeting to begin at 6:00. So thank you for being here tonight. Do I hear a motion? We adjourned.
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening.